Reek to a permanent position on the commission. And then we had a second resignation. And so Shantae Nelson, who you all had the chance to meet before the meeting, a resident of the fourth district, worked for, yeah, Alderman Weezy's district, worked for United Healthcare and now is a nonprofit executive. And she is also an appointee to the State of Wisconsin Ethics Commission. So pleased to have Shantae as my nominee tonight for the second permanent position on the Plan Commission. And then we're also filling the alternate position tonight. And I've asked you all to approve Ryan Atwood to be the alternate on the Plan Commission. So, all right. And then Mr. Cromwell wanted to speak to item 3D. And since you're here in person, you get to understand how the microphones work. If the little red light by the little foam part that you're speaking into does that? The red light is up here. It should be right about here. If this light isn't coming on, we can't hear you when you start speaking. There we go. Perfect.
Robert Cromwell, 7530 North Applewood Lane. I just wanted to point out that while I think the bonfire over at Nicolay is a great event and lots of fun. It isn't allowed under city ordinance 5.2.7. And I'd asked that you amend the ordinance so that you can actually approve them to have a bonfire there or suggest maybe they move it over to the River Hills portion of their property or something. I'm just saying that you have a prohibition on open burning, outdoor burning and burning of refuse or solid waste. There are some exceptions in there, but it involves either grilling with natural gas or charcoal or using a chimenea or decorative fireplace. No way allows anybody to have a bonfire. In fact, it actually prohibits me from having a campfire ring in my backyard even. So if you...
So what?
5.2.7. E is...
So I guess I have a question. While there is a prohibition, if they've come to the city asking for a request to approve their bonfire, does that mean that we are essentially, without amending the ordinance, we are allowing a one-time exception? Is that what this is? You need to speak into the microphone.
Have the authority to do that. It's like with your hours. But to Mr. Cromwell's point, we actually, because that's confusing to say the least, we clarified the hours ordinance to say that if the council grants it and added that to the ordinance, the council had been granting holiday hours for 20 years before that. But that's why I asked them the ordinance number. It would make sense to do it to this one as well.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Cromwell. All right. So before us then is the consent agenda. The consent agenda has four items. The adoption of the minutes of our last meeting to place on file all the monthly reports of city departments, confirmation of the Plan Commission appointments, and then review and approval of the requests from Nicolay High School regarding homecoming bonfire and parade. Can I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
I'm moved.
Second. Moved by Alderman Shaw, seconded by Alderman Weezy. Without objection, the consent...
I have a question.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
I apologize. I was thinking of it now because of the length of time we've been approving this. My question is, it doesn't state it in the memo, but I'm going to assume Brian Riles, the facilities director, will be on hand for the bonfire as it has been in the past.
That is my understanding.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So then, without any objection, the consent agenda is adopted. Hearing no objection, we will move on. Unfinished business. Item 4A is review and discussion on the police organizational study report from Matrix Consulting Group. You won't know until you start talking. The light comes on when you talk. Perfect.
All right. I believe everyone had a chance to look at the matrix study of the police department. Overall, I think it's a rather positive study of the police department. Many of the recommendations that they've listed, we've either already done or in the process of doing or have planned on implementing them in the near future. So most of those things really aren't an issue as far as I look at it because that's where we were heading to anyway. Some of the only concerns that I really have are involve the reallocation of resources and that's mainly moving supervisors into a purely administrative role without having an option for constant supervision. So one of the recommendations they have is to move some lieutenants into purely administrative functions. On one hand, I appreciate that because we could use the help administratively. But what the study doesn't really address is that our lieutenants are also part of our patrol supervision. So if you take them out of the rotation, we end up not having enough supervision. We do not have constant supervision. And I think that's a pretty big problem. It leads to liability concerns, continuation of command, training, whole bunch of other issues that come into that, in that to play. One of the other issues that I kind of had with it, and all it doesn't show as much, is their study is based on one year of data. And I do have some concerns on the data analysis and how they came up with their numbers. And that does have an impact on how they project workload availability. A good example is we gave them the data for our calls for service for one year. They returned in a draft with the numbers woefully lower than what we had. And they had a basis. I talked to the, to the Matrix people and I explained that to them. They came back the next week and they raised the numbers by about 55%. They didn't give me an explanation, excuse me, why they had that first numbers. I'm assuming it's just data analysis. The other issue they had was with the detective bureau. Granted, we don't have a way of accurately tracking their caseloads. Honestly, I didn't think we needed it too much. We were pretty aware of what they were doing, but we don't have the data for that. Their data is based on a survey that they've done. Information that they've had over other surveys didn't really relate to the police department or to our detectives. So the numbers, I'm a little circumspect on some of them. But overall, I think most of their recommendations are positive. And I think those are things that we are either implementing or have already implemented. So with those couple of issues up front, I'm willing to answer any questions anyone has about this study and where we're at with it.
First question, what year did they use data?
2019.
Okay, they did not use 2020.
Okay, 2020 would have been a real waste of time.
It was a very strange year. Yes. So I have a question. You were talking about, actually, there's a couple of things in, that were in the previous item where we approved all the departmental reports. There's a couple of different kinds of stops and different things that you do that I don't understand necessarily the abbreviations for. One of them is listed on here as FI, subject stop for FI. What does that mean?
Field interrogation. So basically, if it's 2:30 in the morning and someone's walking down the alley and we've got complaints of people that have break into cars and we stop someone to talk to them, that's a field interrogation.
Okay. I'm glad nobody was driving down the alley last night. I got up to go to the bathroom and realized that my wife's car was still out on the street and I moved it off the street at 2:40 in the morning. I would have been stopped in my own alley. So I mean, what would be the justification for like a stop like that? For example, trying to understand the process here, like just somebody looks out of place or how do you determine?
Well, yes, a lot of it is either going to be two parts. Either one is, is we get called to a suspicious person or a suspicious circumstance. We go there, there's a couple of people, maybe they identify them. We don't know if there's a crime or not, but there's, there's a difference between reasonable suspicion and probable cause. Probable cause is what you need to arrest somebody. Reasonable suspicion is what you need to stop someone, which basically means it's reasonable that they might be up to something. It's reasonable, they might not be, but it's a reasonable that we can at least inquire about it. So that's what an F.I. stop is. So we might go there and talk to people, find out what they're doing, determine if they're involved in anything that they're not supposed to, or if it was simply they, they aren't doing anything wrong and we sent them on their way. The other issue will be, it's kind of the same way as officers will be on patrol. They'll see someone, I hate to use the word acting suspicious because that can be a whole gamut of different things. But someone that you kind of go, well, that's not usual. Someone walking through a parking lot during the middle of the day doesn't cause really any concern. Someone walking through a car parking lot, say at an auto dealership at 2:00 in the morning, that raises your suspicion and that would be a good reason to do an F.I. stop.
Okay. And then trying to understand the difference in some of the different kinds of traffic stops.
Okay.
So I will say, I appreciate all the work that is done to try and bring down speed. I see the officers regularly along Silver Spring. And I also see drivers going 60 miles an hour in Silver Spring when the officers aren't on Silver Spring. So yeah, they slow down to 60. So I know you make traffic stops, but you have a category called drive and it says driving complaint. How is that different than a traffic stop?
A driving complaint is someone calling it in. So it's, we get the call of, there's a reckless auto westbound on Good Hope at Green Bay Road. So that's the call. If we find the car, we make a traffic stop. But many times we're not in that position or they're out of the city and it's just a complaint.
Okay. So it just gets lodged that somebody did call that in?
Yes.
But you weren't able to actually get to the person?
Correct.
Because if you got to them, then it would be considered a traffic stop? Or would you still put it in this category?
Well, no, it would be, it would, it'd be a, the call came in as a driving complaint, but then in the, in the notes, it would probably be switched over to a traffic stop.
Okay. Thank you. Alderman, do you have a question? Speaking to your microphone, please.
Okay, I have a couple of questions. In regards to the FI, which is the, what is that?
Field interrogation.
Field interrogation. How do I put this? Just because I'm a black woman, I might have some of these issues on this. People calling is one thing. And I think just observing, you may not need to interrogate people. Like you just gave the example of somebody walking through a parking lot in the middle of the day, a car dealership. They're just walking. Somebody who is walking in a car dealership at night may be suspicious. But if you sit there long enough, just a little while longer, you'll see that they kept going or they go through it. I guess this is, as a black woman, and I'm just strictly talking about this, I have been not necessarily stopped by our officers, but years before where I went to go, you know, grab a pack of cigarettes and, you know, light flashed. Obviously, I'm one of the only black people that are on the common council. A lot of people know me, so they're like, oh, how you doing? Keep going. What I want to know, what is the racial makeup of these people that are being stopped? Now, Glendale is what? What's the racial makeup of Glendale of white people? I think it's 85%. If these stops are 95% people of color, I'm going to have an issue. Do you understand? So you're telling me that even though 85% of the people that live in the city have, you know, it's fine, but almost all your stops are people of color? Why are they stopping? Is it because people get nervous because there's a black person there that they don't know? It could be walking down the street. I know my friend, Jada and her friends walk down our block quite a bit at night. They just like to walk. They have been looked at before, not necessarily stopped, but you know, flash, not, they're just taking a walk. I just, as much as our department, I think, is trying to do a really good job of answering questions, I still want to make sure that we're transparent and that we are intentionally making sure that things are safe for all residents. So I, that's where I think that being intentional is saying, like, if you could look at me and be like, so Alderman Vukovich, boom, here it is and it's 50/50 or it's this or this is a reason why it's so hot. You know, is it, is it stops by the motel because a lot of people, you know, that's a transient situation? So most of these are hotel stops. They're going in the neighborhoods. I can get that because it's a hotel and it's transit, that's right by my house. I see people walking there all the time. I get that. But if somebody's walking down Lydell, which is usually dark, is there a reason why you are stopping this person? And is it a valid reason? So I guess that is where, I don't necessarily want you to answer it now. I just want you to look into it because, because I don't want to put you on the spot and I don't want you to, you know, to answer something that you don't have the facts or the...
Well, I don't, I can't, without going into and looking each one, the validity of the reason why they were stopped, I really couldn't answer that unless you looked into it. I can tell you, our practice is basically, it doesn't matter what color your skin is. It's your behavior and where you're at at that time of night. So whether you're walking through a car dealership at 2:00 in the morning or the backyards, you're probably gonna get looked at. If someone's walking down the street, the officer might just look at them and let them go. There's nothing really wrong about going down the street. Unless, of course, you've just, someone called in and you say you matched a description of something.
And Chief, I understand that, but we wouldn't be having Black Lives Matter. We wouldn't be having some of these issues if that was truly, I'm not saying your department does it. I'm not saying they do or don't. I'm just saying we have to pay attention to it. We can't, we can't ignore it or pretend like it may not be a problem. So as much as y'all know I love my chiefy, I'm still going to ask the questions for it and make sure that, that I can proudly say, you know what? No, we don't have an issue. We don't have a problem. Guess what? Out of those 66 people who were stopped, you know, 70% were people that were either walking their dog or walking down the street and we just stopped them. I do have one other question. When you do do that, you stop and then it turns into like they actually did something? Is it taken out of that category and put to another one? Or does it stay in that category?
I'd have to check. Usually what happens is there is an FI stop. And say the officer calls out an F.I. stop, I'll be out with a couple of people doing here or there. A good example that might be in the park. So we patrol the parks. No one's allowed to be in the park after 10:00 or something like that. So if they go there, they're going to do an F.I. stop. There's a couple of people in the park. If it's, they're just sitting there talking, everything else, then it stays under that kind of call and it will be, you know, 10:08, they were told to leave or told to park hours. If it was all of a sudden they were involved in something where it turned into an arrest, then it would be changed to an arrest.
Whatever the rest was. Okay. Because that also makes a big deal if most of them are staying there and it's no, you know, you just looked, asked. That's a difference than if they're all staying there? Because if they move...
I'll have to double check to make sure.
But you see, if they move, then that's a bigger issue. If they move, if they don't move, then it may not be as big of an issue because you just left it in that category. And out of the 66, I think that we're there, if 50 of them move to another category, you know? So that's, that's what I'm saying. Okay.
That's my assumption that they would be moved to somewhere else. But that's all dependent on dispatcher. It's all dependent on the dispatcher actually moving it.
All dependent on the dispatcher moving that call into a different category.
And then if that is the case, then it's just a training thing. Hey, move it to, and then it doesn't, you know, the, the numbers are not skewed. Do you see? So it may be something as simple as training of the dispatcher to move it where it needs to go. Or it could be a bigger problem where we are profiling. And I'm not saying which way we're profiling. Or it may be something that we need to take a look at on how we do it. So it's not a direct hit, even though I'd already apologized to him and said, be nice. You know, I'm going to be a little...
I can, I can look at those F.I. numbers and see if I can categorize them into the reasons for their stops and what the outcome was.
Okay. And I also would like to see, I think you did this, but I can't find it, the, the traffic stops and the racial makeup of the traffic stops as well.
And you want traffic stop?
Yes. All right, I'm done. Sorry.
I think I requested that at one point in the past. It's been a while.
Okay.
But I don't know that we've had it recently. So, yeah. Okay. Alderman Schlesley?
I think we already, I have a couple of other side questions, but on this specific topic, I think really the key is the reason. I think that's the main thing. So as from my perspective, it's the number two item we have are these. And I've actually called one of these in because someone was walking around the neighborhood, walking through yards, looking at cars. So I was, I called it in. I'm sure you might have stopped some people and asked them what they were doing in town in that corner because of the type of things we have with people pulling on doors and grabbing things inside. So, but in general, I think the reason, so if that was noted, you know, was called in on these, I think that's really what we want to have, at least what I would like to see as well as, you know, making sure we're legitimately stopping these people for those reasons. And if it's logged, that's great. And then you can do those metrics. If it's not, then I think we just have to bone up on those metrics and make sure we have a legitimate reason for those and have logged.
Any other comments or questions, members of the council?
Other topics, I'll just keep going.
Okay, go ahead. Yeah, so you saw the floor.
All right, thank you. I saw they had a four-year rotation recommended. I thought we were already on a four-year police vehicle rotation. Okay, so I'm not crazy. I just thought maybe that wasn't what I had seen before. I actually had the question about FI, so thank you for that. That's, now I know what that is. And then a general question on the detectives. Do you think we would do more investigation, more like finding out who was stealing cars, burglaries, things? If we had more detectives? Because they, they said it was like a 3.1 versus four were good, is what they were saying. But at the same time, I don't know. It's like, it seems like it'd be nice to get to the bottom of some of these things. I have, we have reports every time of more cars being stolen. I know it's not always things that we can control, but just your, your general opinion, plus the case, they didn't have much data to go off of, as you already indicated. So just trying to get a feel for, maybe there'd be a better use of resources if we could, you know, do more investigation.
I don't think we really need more detectives. I think we're fine with where we're at. The problem is identifying people. We have this all the time and we've probably had another three or four cars stolen over the, over the weekend. It's same people, a couple 14-year-olds. I think one was 12. And the issue is, and we have a lot of problems with them breaking into cars overnight. We get a lot of ring videos from people walking through. Problem is, as we see them, it's just identifying. So there is some background. Normally we get done, our detectives do a pretty good job of, of, once we get some photos and we get some idea, they work with other agencies in Milwaukee County. And as soon as someone identifies a group of them and that, you know, they're associated with it, then we can maybe put one and one together. And if they have photos of them, we can do it that way. But the vast majority of, with the thefts of autos and things like that, is it's, it's small groups of people going out and doing it over and over until you finally catch them. And then you catch one and he's with two other three people. And then the next day, one of those other people, because there's not much you can do if they're sitting in a passenger seat, stops somewhere else. And then you start building, you start building the names of the people that are involved in this. And that's where you can kind of get it solved on the backend. But the vast majority of these are, they, they, they go until they're caught. And then, and you try to, where the detectives work is, once we've caught them or someone else has caught them, going back and trying to find out if they were involved in any of ours, doing a lot of legwork and a background work and interviewing with them to see if, if they were responsible for any of ours or not.
And so, thank you. It's ultimately some of these things without enough evidence to kind of go on. There's not much more we could do with additional attempt.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Any additional questions or?
Nope, that was it.
I did have one additional question. I noticed that we do have a number of stop, traffic stops that involve reckless driving. And typically, I'm assuming those are the people that go into the right lane, blow through a red light and keep going. Often I have noticed that those are cars without a license plate on them. And I'm curious, do we make a stop because a car is not licensed? I know the city of Milwaukee does not enforce it. It's one of the things, they don't have time. I mean, if they pull them over for something else, but they're not just going to, it seems like they're not pulling cars over at all if they just don't have a license plate on them.
It is still a violation?
Yeah. Your microphone.
We, it's still a violation and we will still stop people for that. It's a lower priority stop. But obviously, if the officer is driving down the road and there's a car right next to them that doesn't have any license plates on, it's like, well, okay. If there's nothing else going by, I'll give them a stop. And, and sometimes it's, it's just simply someone didn't get their car registered. Most of the time when we have cars that, if the only violation is they're not registered, usually what we try to do is give them time to get the car registered. If it's so long, it's been six months since they've registered their car, they may get a citation and they're told if you get your car registered, come into court, it's going to get dropped.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, Chief. Appreciate it. And there's no vote on this, this is just information. All right, we'll move on then to new business. First item is item 5A. It's a recommendation from the Plan Commission to schedule a public hearing for Monday, September 27th for a petition to rezone 5201 North Port Washington Road. This request was submitted by Chick-fil-A and they want to rezone it from a B1B district to a PD planned unit development so that they can build a fast service, drive-in service-only restaurant. So do you have anything else you want to report? Okay. So the Chick-fil-A request went to the Plan Commission. We did already at the Plan Commission, reviewed everything and the Plan Commission is recommending now to the council that, it was a unanimous vote to rezone. So can I have a motion to schedule the plan, the public hearing for Monday, September 27th? Moved Alderman Shaw, seconded by Alderman Gelhard. Any discussion? Alderman Weezy?
Thank you. Before I, as I start speaking here, I want to pass these out. These are, if you could pass them along. This past Saturday evening, excuse me, my wife and I and I, another couple, we're out in Brookfield for dinner and we're in the same property as the Chick-fil-A off Capital Drive. We pulled in at about 7:30. The line of cars was, you know, far exceeding what's shown in this photograph. This was taken at night or 8:30 at night. My concern is, and the other cars in the parking lot, by the way, that you can see, those were all cars waiting for carryout. You know, so the place was just slammed. I don't, you know, people just absolutely love their Chick-fil-A. And the, my concern is that with the one entry and exit that is planned, it's potentially going to cause some real problems on Port Washington Road. So I know we had this discussion previously when it was proposed for the Worth Building. This is a better location, but still with the number of vehicles that come into these, I am very much concerned that if we, this does go forward, and I hate to be, you know, throw cold water on this, but if it does go forward, I'm afraid there's going to be some serious traffic problems.
Alderman Vukovich? I, so I was not a fan of Chick-fil-A coming to the Worth Building at all. And they had reached out to Rachel and I, and I've seen their proposal. The difference with this one is number one, it's no residential around there. They are both by businesses, which is, at that time of night, there's no traffic over there. I live there. I mean, I live two blocks away from there. So I don't have an issue with the, the traffic. And this is a drive-through only, which is a little bit different because the way they described it is you, you have your phone. You are ordering ahead of time. Most, 90% of it, it will be ordered ahead of time on a phone. And they have, the way they're setting it up, which is different. And this is the first one in the Midwest. There are other ones like this outside of the Midwest, but this is one that's different. Or this will be the first one in the Midwest. And it is strictly about in and out, getting people out of there. They showed, on the plans, they showed the way the traffic goes. And if your, your, your meal is taking longer, they have a way to adjust for that. If you, you are just getting a soda, they have an adjustment for that. So as much as I was definitely not in favor of the previous Chick-fil-A where it was, this one, because of its location, that is not around residential. We rarely have, I've lived over there for eight years. I have never had traffic back up, even when they were doing construction over there. Like when they were doing that, that, that intersection, it still was not backing up because of how far it is between the two lines and where the lights are going. And there will be, from what I understand, there'll be another cutoff, which is a turn lane going in and another turn lane going out. So I'm not, I'm just telling you, from my perspective, I, I was very against the other one for the traffic. This one I'm not against because they really did, and they did even a traffic study.
Right. That's what I was going to ask the city administrator because their traffic study did indicate the ability to handle larger number of cars in queue than they have at any of their other locations in the area.
The, the other thing is, is the Brookfield location on...
The, the other thing is, is the Brookfield location on Capital Drive is the highest attended and grossing Chick-fil-A in the Midwest. They, they've identified that that one is an anomaly, that most of them are closer to how Oak Creek runs or trying to be walkie. And so that is, the traffic study took all of that into account. And also, the way they've laid out the traffic queuing, as Alderman Vukovich indicated. It's queued up differently in the drive-through than other locations as well. The dual lane starts earlier.
I just, I wanted just to bring this to the attention of the council that, I mean, these, this is like maus to a flame, really. Seriously, I mean, people are just madly in love with Chick-fil-A and just something that I think we really seriously need to consider. Agenda item is just to schedule the public hearing, discussing whether you think it should be approved or not is really what you do when you have the public hearing.
Oh, Alderman Gelhard?
I think Alderman Wheezy has a legitimate concern here. And I would just remind people, if you didn't remember. We had a situation with Educators Credit Union up in my district where they only had the drive-through. People were backed up onto Port Washington Road. It was a mess. I know that I contacted the chief at one point in time. So I think we need to take a close look at this when it comes to the public meeting. And if it means that, and I've been out to that Brookfield location on one occasion, they have two drive-throughs. Maybe they might have to consider adding perhaps, you know, more drive-throughs just for that particular reason to prevent backups on the Port Washington Road. Because we just can't have that.
Alderman Schmeling?
I was just, again, this is probably related to the future topic, but again, I was looking at the traffic. I didn't get into the details because I knew we'd be discussing them, but I think it is something to look at. I was encouraged to see that I think there's three drive-through lanes, queues, and it's, and the fact that they are willing to do the, the left turn lane and all of that. As, if it's recommended, I had to look at it, but I think that was part of the plan, shows they are trying to address the concerns we, we had prior. So I'd like to dig in a little bit more. I see they factored up the, you know, the volumes from 2021. So, but again, let's, let's look at that later in more detail.
So I'm gonna ask this, city administrator, would you please, before the public hearing, make sure that the Chick-fil-A folks are aware that the council is gonna ask, regardless of what happens in the public hearing portion of the meeting. The council is gonna ask a lot of questions about traffic.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much. All right. All those in favor of scheduling the public hearing for Monday, September 27th, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is also a recommendation from the Plan Commission. Item 5B is for review and approval of a certified survey map for Glendale Partners LLC. Ms. Sashram?
Yes, the certified survey map that is before you takes the east lot of Glendale Partners and splits it into two lots. There's lot one, and then there's the two outlots. One is for a potential billboard sign, one is for a potential cell tower. In addition, and more importantly, is the little bit of added land to the, the northeast. That is coming from the Maki property, which is necessary for them to build the, do the build out on this lot. So the CSM just makes some minor changes to that area. And we recommend, the Plan Commission recommends approval of the CSM as, as presented. Along with any fees that may be required after city engineer review and technical review fees.
All right, can I have a motion then to approve the certified survey map based upon the recommendation of the Plan Commission? Move Alderman Doherty, is there a second? Second of Alderman Shaw, any discussion? Alderman Wheezy?
Sorry, I'm really being a downer tonight, but I have concerns about the number of billboards and cell towers.
This isn't for the billboard or cell tower that, that would come at a later date. This is, this is solely for the CSM.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor of approving the certified survey map, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. Next item is review and approval of the 2021-2022 School Resource Officer Shared Services Agreement with Nicolay High School.
As presented in the past, this is an annual agreement that the city has with Nicolay High School, funding a portion of the police officer. For attendance at the officer, for the attendance of the assigned officer at Nicolay School District. Standard agreement includes wages and benefits, and Nicolay's share is 66%.
And I would just add that we remember we referred the job description and policy item to the Police Commission. The Police Commission did recommend some changes. Those were approved at the Police Commission, then sent over to Nicolay High School. The Nicolay School Board also approved all of those changes. So the, 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 the policy is now very specific and outlined that if we have a school resource officer, these are all their duties and responsibilities. And now what's before us tonight is the approval of the shared services agreement that provides a school resource officer for another year. Can I have a motion to approve the SRO agreement?
Moved.
Move Alderman Wheezy, second of Alderman Gelhard. Any discussion? Alderman Shaw?
I'm just curious, do they have a, an officer in mind for the position already?
Officer Bonville, I'm sorry, Lorenz is our school resource officer.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
The woman, Bukovic?
I will say this, every time this comes up, I did my job as on the Police Commission as policy, did not fight this. But I do not believe in resource officers being in schools. I don't believe in guns or being in schools. So I'm just letting you know that I'll be voting no on this, just for the fact that there is a gun in the school. And we are one of two schools in the North Shore that has a resource officer. I understand all that, but this is the budget part of it. So now I'm going to be against it and the budget part of it.
All right, any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor, aye. Oppose, no.
No.
All right, motion carries. Next is item 5D, review and approval of the Digital Forensic Task Force Memorandum of Understanding. I think this is back over to the chief, right?
Either way.
Okay.
We have used, we have a forensic unit that several of our detectives and officers are, that we have had, we use software, it's called Celebrite. For the last five or six years, that allows us to do forensic investigations for mobile phones. It is limited to some mobile devices and, and we're finding the more and more we go along with it. The more high-tech equipment and software is needed to do these forensic investigations. There are about four to five agencies in Milwaukee County that do forensic investigations. Greenfield PD, we do, West Dallas, Walatosa, and Oak Creek, and I believe Milwaukee does. What Greenfield has done is basically a shared services agreement. They have gone out on their own and bought all the top-notch software and equipment that most people can afford. And then they've offered it to join into a task force type thing for those four to five agencies that are doing it, that we would like to do it. Basically, they maintain all the equipment. They maintain all the high-end software. Our cost is actually going to be at least the same, maybe a little lower than what we're paying now for our software fees. And we're getting a lot more investigative ability out of it. So it, it's kind of a win-win situation for us.
All right, thank you. I have a motion then to approve the, the MOU with the City of Glendale and the City of Greenfield. Move Alderman Vukovic, second of Alderman Shaw, any discussion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. The next item. Is item 5E, authorization to purchase the North Shore Fire Department's tanker tender truck and required supplemental equipment for the Department of Public Works.
This is an interesting request, and that's something that comes before you every day. As our, our new mechanic has been working and communicating with the mechanic at the fire department. On my different levels, one of the things that came up was that the fire department would be replacing their tender truck and what, water tanker truck. And that that could be available to the city of Glendale to be retrofitted as a brine truck, which is very interesting. If we were to purchase a new truck and make it solely for brine, you're looking at over $200,000. But we're able to retrofit this and make it a unilateral use for brine at approximately $48,000, which of course is considerably less. This would make it possible for us to, at some points throughout the winter season, have two trucks. Because we do have an additional brine application to put on to one of our plow trucks. But that gets removed then, so that we can go about the salting operation as the plowing happens after brine would be applied. So this is an excellent opportunity if we're able to get it approved. And we would then, at a subsequent meeting, most likely the next one, I'm hoping to be able to bring a budget resolution that would identify if this, I'm, I'm not sure if we can get. If we can get it into the capital projects fund with some other savings that have come up through the year in public works, we will. Otherwise, it's most likely going to be a capital project. Overall, this is a great opportunity for us, and we don't have any concerns with the quality of the vehicle as we know what the maintenance records are and, and how that's worked.
All right, is there a motion then to authorize staff to move forward with the purchase with an understanding that they're gonna have to come back to us with a resolution authorizing the funds?
Moved.
Move Alderman Wheezy, seconded by Alderman Doherty. Any discussion? Thank you for thinking outside the box, or thanks staff for thinking outside the box.
Thank you, Charlie and staff.
Yeah.
I plan your place to park it.
All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. The next item is review and approval of the Fall Newsletter. Fall Newsletter was included in our packets. Rachel, did you receive any suggested changes or edits?
Oh, we, we did with an initial review from Alderman Shaw. I have not seen or heard from anyone since. This one was a little bit challenging for us. Megan pinched it for us as Kale has been out ill for the last week and a half. So thank you, Megan.
Oh, can I have a motion then to approve the Fall Newsletter?
Moved.
Move Alderman Shaw, is there a second? Second of Alderman Vukovic, any discussion? Alderman Gelhard?
Could we add just one thing? It's, it's very minor, but it's under the, the brush and yard waste. And under guidelines for yard waste, pick up, the very last item says reminder that burning of brush is not allowed. Could we just add reminder that burning of brush or yard waste is not allowed, just so to clarify that?
Absolutely. And, and maybe I'm gonna add to it just because it is kind of hidden at the bottom. Can we also make it bold?
Um, I, actually, I've got a question around that topic. Some of our folks had, in contacting GFL recently around after the storm. Said that it's the city that made the rule that the brush, that sticks and twigs have to be bound.
In the contract.
Right. And I think, can we make it, can we make it clear that the rules around pickup are set by the company that does the pickup? And not, I don't want people blaming us. So let's, let's, let's write the, have that language worded in such a way that we are following their rules.
We're following the contract. I'm not sure if that was something we had put in or they had put in at the time of the contract negotiation. That was Administrator Maslowski and, and Director of Public Works, Dave Eastman. They, they had negotiated that contract.
Okay.
But even if we say, as written in the contract, right, that might at least let them know that it's not something we have drug control over right now.
Right.
Correct.
All right, any other questions about the newsletter? All those in favor of approving the newsletter so I can go to print, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no.
Good job.
Carries. All right. And then our final item of new business is discussion on the August 10, 2021 storm damage and response.
That was a request by Alderman Wheezy.
Okay, Alderman Wheezy?
Thank you. The city of Glendale, I think it goes without saying, we got hit pretty darn hard on that Tuesday storm. It, by all appearances, I think the northern end of the city got hit the hardest. And my phone has been blown up. People have been knocking on my door, stopping me in the street. And voicing very loudly their concerns and complaints about having brush picked up. Yeah, having to, again, tie the bundles together. I mean, people have gone to great extent to have nice neat little piles. And the driver will drive past, take a look at it, go back to the cab, write out a note, walk back to the pile, put a note on the pile and drive on. He could have just as easily picked it up, but that's contract issue. That's, that's not. But my main point is, is that there's a lot of brush that remains. People aren't cutting it up. They're just, it's just gonna stay there until the plow pushes it over. And they've also, many people have told me, says, well, why isn't Glendale doing what a lot of other neighboring communities are? Going around chipping up the stuff. And I said, I, coming back and telling them that, look, we don't have the staff, that's not been the policy, you know? And it got me thinking that we're coming up on budget season. Rachel, we've what, two more years on this contract with?
Three and a half.
But 2024, December 31st of 2024.
Okay. But I would like to have some investigation done or some thought given to the cost of actually bringing those services back within the city DPW. I fully understand that we would have to add some staff, we'd have to add equipment. But we're, we're spending last year's budget, just a tad over $600,000 for an outside resource. Might we be able to do that a little more cost-effectively potentially within the city structure if we acquired the equipment? Looking around, the refuse company, whatever the name is this month. They usually have two trucks or one truck doing garbage in the city all week long, just based on the district. The new trucks, they're very efficient. Then they have a second one going around for recycling. I took a quick look online. You can buy a brand-new side lift dump refuse truck for just a tad over $300,000. That's lot, you know, list price online, I'm sure it can be negotiated. So. And granted, there's tipping fees and all the other fees associated, but might it not be in the city's best interest to at least investigate? How much, you know, the cost would be to say, let's bring it inside and potentially provide our residents better service? And at potentially a lower cost.
So last Monday, Rachel and I sat down and talked, because it's by that point, everybody had power back on. And we were about to head into the week where refuse, where, where brush was supposed to be picked up, or in many cases, not picked up. So I actually, Rachel and I sat and talked, and I said, I go, well, what would it cost to bring these things in-house? And she said, I don't know. She goes, but I will, she made her little note. She goes, that's gonna go on my task list. I will have staff work on that. And I'll bring up, I'll bring the comparisons back to the, the board. She said, it, it may, it may take me, you know, a few council meetings before we have that information. Because she's gonna bring it back to us with actual dollars and cents, not ballpark figures. So this is what we pay now. This is the cost of buying trucks. This is the cost of staff. And over, and I think you said, this was under the current contracts, under a 10-year period, you would look at it over a 10-year period, is that right?
Yes, and, and I did some down and dirty numbers. And it's without yard waste, this is just garbage and recycling. And comparative to Whitefish Bay, I contacted Whitefish Bay about what their costs are, what they budget for tipping fees, what their employees are. We're looking at 600,000 more. Over the course of 10 years, just on garbage and recycling. Now, if you're gonna add in yard waste and you're gonna add brush pickup and you're gonna add special pickups, then you're also gonna need to add in some GPS tracking. Because we have a significant amount of people that call on a daily basis. My, my garbage was missed. They missed me. And when GFL goes and looks or advanced disposal, when it was them, it, they weren't missed. They didn't have their garbage out. And so then you have to go around and chase after that as well. Because if you don't have the GPS tracking with the photo capabilities, how do we prove it back? And then, and go through that. So it can have additional costs there as well. So just with the start of it, we'll, we'll be considerably more.
But again, without that updated review, do we know that we're actually getting the best value? do we know that we're actually getting the best value? And that's part of this exercise is to see, you know, are we in fact getting a good deal or could we do better?
And that's something we definitely look at at the time of the end of the contract as we come closer to that. As well as looking into, and I have asked Whitefish Bay if they would be interested in being our contracted service and they are not necessarily interested.
One of the things in the eighties and nineties, this city privatized so many of its services. In the last few years, Rachel has brought to us a number of proposals to unprivatize, bring things back in house and, and we have, but each time she's been able to present to us a spreadsheet that says, this is what it's going to cost to bring it in house, but long-term over an, you know, an eight or 10 year period, this is how much money we're actually going to save or we're going to break even, but get better service. So she's been able to justify each time. I, I do think when we get to the end of this contract, we're still three years out, but when we get to the end of the contract, and there's no ability to get out of the contract early, correct?
Uh, city of Port Washington's working on that right now. I don't recommend it.
Okay.
It's not going well.
Okay.
For the residents.
Well, if you haven't bought the trucks and you don't have the staff ready to take over.
Very hard.
Which I know.
And the lead out time on trucks is two years now. Yeah.
Okay.
Time to start.
Alderman Schelling.
So I, I looked into this a while back when the original bundling contractual terms were starting to be upheld by advanced. And I know that Brown Deer also uses advanced and they had the same rules when I looked into this. So I, I think as horrible as it sounds, we're not alone. It doesn't seem, nobody likes it, but I think they started doing that. And GFL just continued on. Other things to consider is Bayside collects half as often, but they don't allow bundling. But if there's too much, they'll charge extra. So imagine the calls we'd get from that one if all of a sudden we'd start charging for more. And then Fox Point only collects in the fall. And as far as I could tell, there is no volume limit or bundling. And then Shored comes out monthly, they'll charge you extra as well. So there's, and I looked into Milwaukee and a few others. So I think let's compare to our other communities. It's not pretty what we have with the new bundling. But it's something, what I think maybe we could do is have some flexibility in helping our constituents when we have these storm events. Because normally we should be able to figure it out. And I hate the bundling, but eventually we should be able to get that removed from the contract. But if there's a way that we could do something, I don't know what we all have. I know we don't. One person indicated we have foresters. We actually contract out that service just to mark trees essentially. But we do have staff that potentially could help pull things back in a situation where we do have maybe a special call or a special pickup or just some accommodation. I don't know if that's something we could do.
What would be the policy? Is the policy that you have a storm come through and it hits one house really bad and they lose three trees? We help them. Or is it that 300 homes are hit and they each lose a tree and we help them? So you, you need to identify what the parameters of a storm and helping each individual resident becomes as it is private property. And when a tree falls down in my yard, I, I'm responsible to take care of it. No different than when an ash tree is dead and we send out a letter and technically they are responsible to take care of it. And if not, then we send out a crew and we charge back.
But I, I understand we'd have to come up with those sort of policy calls, but I, I think right now, what I'm hearing from my constituents is the service we are providing in these types of scenarios, which might come more frequently in the future is not meeting the need. So I, I think if there's something we, we could do, maybe on a future meeting, we put something out there and say, what would be those rules? And what, what do we have for our equipment right now? If I may ask that to do chipping and such.
We have a chipper that goes along with the two people that are trimming trees.
Okay.
And the trimming of trees just started about a year and a half ago, two years ago. As it had been something that had lapsed for almost 20.
We have essentially.
Catching up on that.
Department of Public Works staff and then namely two individuals who are kind of.
If, right, if the two individuals are not on vacation sick leave and whatnot.
Okay, understood. So limited flexibility. Cause I think this is important to know as well.
Right. We have a very small crew. To give you an example, Village of Fox Point has 17 public works crew members. We have 13. 12 off by one.
Also very helpful to know. So, so really we have one chipper. We don't have a full army of foresters. And we have.
Correct.
Two people who typically work this equipment and they just kind of back each other up, but it's, it's not an army.
Well, and you, when you have chainsaw safety and tree safety, you have to run a crew of two. You cannot run less. It has to be two or more with, with the, the safety parameters.
My intent in bringing this up, however, was not to have the city act as a forest department. It's where there's piles of, you know, medium sized branches that people may not have the ability to cut up down to the requirements by, you know, the recycling people or the yard waste pickup people. Maybe the city at that point, maybe we could, you know, review policy and say, hey, on, on special cases like these storms that don't happen all that frequently, can the city potentially assist the residents in a little more proactive manner?
Very Alderman Doherty.
I think that's all I want to do. I think look at some options, what those cities are doing. It's not that simple. It sounds simple, but I know it's not. But I think we probably try to look at something or certain folks are certainly struggling and you see that. And some of the stuff I've seen left behind is clearly not anywhere near the cutting instructions. So it's much larger. It's not bundled. There's nothing near it. And I, on our street, I'd say it was probably three people out of all of us had tons of stuff out there, but three people didn't process it correctly. So I'm not faulting the pickup. But I think we may have to think about what we can do different. Or is there an option we can at least offer where somebody may have to pay, but maybe we help get it done. So.
Oh, Alderman Vukovich.
Alderman Doherty's last statement, everybody is different in each of these, these districts. I mean, I know like Alderman Weezy's district has a lot of more. These are so, or it's basically on, on, on his district compared to mine, which doesn't really have as much until you get over by the river. I, I think I would, I would have an issue where we are putting money into something that doesn't work for everybody. I mean, everybody doesn't have an issue with that.
Well, that's off the hook.
Right.
You had a tree fall in a house.
Yeah, but that's just one. So this is my question. If I do that, if I have the city do that for that, and it's the, the most unlucky house ever in the history of Glendale. That house is so, I, I just want to bless it. Because they have been two cars, a tree, whatever else, but should, did we pay for them to get that tree taken out?
There were two homes that were hit by trees. One was a private tree hitting the private home. That was the unlucky house on Mohawk. Further down on Mohawk was another tree that was a city tree that went in to their home and that we had removed and they contacted their homeowner's insurance to start the process.
That's where I think our, our difference is, is if it's a city tree and we, we damaged something, then it's city has to do something about it. If it's private property, you know, I mean, it's private property.
I mean, it, it is the issue of, of we're not going to be the landscaping service for, or the tree service for people. But if it's a city tree, we're definitely going to take care of it and, and our staff certainly did. And, but I, I do agree that there, there are times where, you know, we, we might be able to be helpful. I did notice, you know, just in the Crestwood neighborhood, for example, there's a, a handful of, of people have a tree branch, one big tree branch laying out in the road. And if the chipper could come by and just take it because you know, maybe that person doesn't own a chainsaw or whatever, you know what I'm saying? And it was a weird to say it was a storm, right?
But I think our city people are doing that. I mean, I have seen them go around and they see a big chunk of stuff. They're just grabbing it and especially if they're there. I've seen it a couple of different times where they just, they throw them in and just keep going because it's sitting right there. I don't think they're purposely leaving it, but I know Charlie, I've seen your crew do it a couple of times where they see stuff there and they're there, they throw it in.
Alderman Shaw.
Just to make some observations. I know you're all talking about bundling. It's like, gee, I had to bundle as a kid and it all changes. People came along and, you know, did everything. So we don't need to cuddle there. And then if you're looking for recommendations to take branches apart, because I mean, I got a city tree that lost a branch this week from the storm that we had this week and it's sitting there, but we'll take care of it. But if you're looking for recommendations to cut things down, the city will not recommend anybody. That's not their job. But your insurance agent does. I know I used to work for one and they always have recommendations. Talk to your insurance agent. Just to see what they are, a, a insurance agent, somebody who always say who would they recommend for, to do the service about cutting up trees.
I would also just like to commend the Clover Nook subdivision as, I know this, I don't know if you know this, Alderman Gellhard. Steve Sheldon had been driving down through the storm and saw that there was a tree of Claros Gene Nicolay. By the time he got staffed there, there were residents already cutting it up.
Oh.
Three residents? Oh, three trees, three trees. Sorry.
I know that the, the.
That, so that was very, that was very appreciated as we were trying to work through the process.
And, and the city did take out a tree that was on Daphne, I believe. And that was, you know, fell across the road, which I became aware of before I, you know, hit it with my car, but.
Yeah, I, I have to commend, I think.
Well, hold on. Oh, I, I just wanted to say that I, I think it's worthwhile to take a look at bringing it in-house. I think as the contract with GFL becomes more expensive, which it undoubtedly will be, it might be a situation where it's feasible for us to do it. If, if Whitefish Bay does it, then it's, you know, certainly something to, to take a look at going forward. And so, yeah, I think that's a good idea. In terms of just general complaints, I, I am still getting the complaints about the, the, you know, the yard waste that's not pushed up, has, hasn't been picked up. But I also got a complaint during the, the power outage about why didn't we have police officers at intersections where the, the lights had gone out? And so, I don't know, chief, what, do you have anything to, to say about that?
About, about the traffic?
Right. So during the power outage, which lasted three days for me. So, so, some of my constituents were like, how come we don't have Glendale police at these intersections where the, the traffic lights are out?
We, we did. I mean, we were, the station was out powered for three and a half days too. We had people at Port, I'm sorry, Green Bay and Good Hope and then Green Bay and I'm sorry, Good Hope and Silver, uh, Range Line when those lights were out. We've also learned that putting an officer in the middle of all that, trying to direct traffic really kind of goose everything up. So what we do is put the stop signs out. We have squads there as sort of a monitor. So gets everyone's attention. You see two squads in the intersection, you move along.
Is it a situation where we would only be, have police officers stationed at intersections where the city is responsible or?
Well, no, I mean, we had them at Port and the Parkway and Silver Spring because we had other places out. It was just a matter of staffing up there. You have high speeds. The stop signs, now everybody sees the stop signs. So it was, it was a traffic safety issue for that first day, day and a half. And I believe by the second day, people had been aware enough that we didn't put someone at, at Good Hope and Green Bay and we moved down the range line. So as soon as we started seeing that people were actually paying attention to the four-way stop signs and it was working, then we did it that way.
Alderman Schelling.
I was just going to say that I had great feedback about the trees being cleaned up in the city roads. You know, I'm still railing from the trees that are private, that are just not being picked up by our service provider. But I, I think that was great. You guys got out there. We, we got the text messaging going. And it was, it was, I also got some interesting feedback, maybe something to consider outside of maybe the city's control, but I heard on Acacia, there was a group of people that lined up generators and powered the entire other side of the street with extension cords. So there's a lot that can be done if we all just band together and try to get things done. So when you hear about trees being cleaned up.
One side of the street had power, but the other side of the street didn't.
Yep.
So they all got their generators to take care of the side that didn't?
Correct. So they, yeah. So they just did that and then powered the whole other side and not even the generators. They just ran extension cords. But regardless, I don't know how that, how safe that is. So don't, don't tell the fire department. But the point, the, the point being, I think there's maybe things we could do to encourage, like helping out your neighbors in these situations as well. And I know we're not supposed to necessarily put our yard waste in somebody else's yard to be picked up. But if we could all help out and bundle, that might be another option in these scenarios.
Although I did recommend that on my next door post. If you have too much, talk with your neighbors who don't have any.
I thought that was a personal message.
Well, you look at it as you helping neighbors, just.
Right, right.
But with permission.
All right. So Rachel, you've, I know you've been taking some notes from, any other comments from anybody? So city staff did a great job. We, obviously a couple of areas we'd like to explore in case we have another, another storm like this. And then obviously we've got three and a half years until the contract with GFL expires, but maybe a conversation with them soon about what, what a renewal might look like. Do they, can they give us some preliminary numbers? Because if it's going to take us two years to buy trucks and we wait until six months before it expires to find out that they're going to jack the price up 300,000 a year?
I, I don't know how much they would jack it up. One of the things that Charlie and I have talked about are different parameters that we have been experiencing over the past couple of years, the bundling, putting in an emergency clause and asking for assistance that way. The other question that's going to come up is as we go through this, are we going to try to do some sort of à la carte situation? Because are we going to have our employees trying to do special pickups of furniture? And what kind of challenges does that cause with workers' compensation and, and whatnot? So you know, what, what are our options going to be? This, it's not, it's going to be an ongoing conversation. It's been an ongoing conversation with staff over the past couple of years.
Okay. Alderman Shaw and then Alderman Weezy, then we'll move on.
Figured something when you talked about special clauses with GFL. If you want to, you and Mr. Imig, when I look back at the 2010 flood that, where we got hit really hard, I know Maslowski and they've worked on a special deal with the contractor at that time to pick up a lot of stuff because people's houses were flooded. So I mean, if you even want to investigate that and how they handled that.
That, that was special pickup of, of large items, different than the yard waste. I'm not sure what that all entailed at that time. I think it was pre, it, it was the prior contract as well. So I would have to look into that. Right.
You have to have some history records on your files as well.
Guys aren't picking picked up by the mic, so.
On that same, I don't remember from the contract because I reviewed at one point, there's any like limitation on the special pickups. So potentially that's not a concern.
It, it, there is a limitation. They, they're only allowed like so many items per Monday. Not so many calls, but what, what we could do in those cases when there's flooding, similar to what happened last year during COVID is we requested to allow us to have a dumpster where we could have people bring it in and that we've continued on and been able to work with them on that. And I really do believe that you don't see as much large furniture items out on the curb as we did in the past prior to offering that service.
Alderman Weezy.
All right. Thank you. The, just the commentary about the police reminded me, chief, thank you and thank your officers for their diligence at the two major intersections along Good Hope Road and the fourth district, because that was scary trying to get through there. Those first couple of days, people were just flying and the officers there, that really, really helped. So thank you and please pass that on.
But thank you.
Yep. Go ahead, Alderman Vukovich. Microphone.
I have a big mouth. Special pickup. You know how we are that special, special drop off that we do, like we just did one recently? Can we possibly just do one more that says, hey, bring your stuff here, you know? It may not be a pickup, but bring your stuff here and we will take it from, because of the storm.
But we can ask and that's an option. That was something that they identified as an option to us.
No, no, I'm talking, you know how.
For the brush pickup?
Yeah, like we do that, that one where we.
That's for the dumpster. That's only for the large furniture items, large household items that don't fit into a garbage can.
Okay. But then can we do something like this for this one time? Only see what it costs or what it can be that they bring it to them and just haul it, drop it off, and then there won't be a pickup.
The people have a lot of big branches. They're not going to haul them. They'd have to have a larger car.
Okay, look, I'm just trying to find some solution. You guys are sitting there. My district didn't have that much. I'm just saying.
Just that one unlucky house, right? All right. So, all right, we'll move, move on. Commission committee and board reports. Alderman Vukovich.
Please sign up for if you are going to the League of. Please sign up for, if you are going to the League of Municipalities Convention in Green Bay, you need to do that, or set your hotel up pretty quickly, because they are running out of space, and it's almost.
When's the deadline?
Well, the, I don't know when the deadline is, but the convention is October twenty-first through the twenty-third.
City has four rooms blocked already for anyone who wanted to attend. If you could contact Kayla, if you want to register or attend, she will block off one of those rooms and get you registered.
We know when Kayla will be back.
We're hoping for Monday.
Okay. So another week yet. Okay. All right, so League, thank you. Anything else? Okay, Alderman Doherty?
What's the report at this time?
Alderman Gallhard.
I think this evening.
Alderman Weezy?
I think this evening.
Alderman Schmeling?
Nothing for me.
Alderman Shaw?
We had the last music in the Glenn last Wednesday, and it was pretty, went really well. My only thing is, I was at the first and the last due to circumstances. We canceled the week before, so. But with respect to that, I think we did well, and I'm looking forward to next year, and we should be having a wrap-up meeting, actually, this Wednesday, I believe, which I have to remind myself to get them information. And then last week was the North Shore Library Board. That only lasted about thirty minutes, so that went really quick and fast, because Kurt wasn't there. And we had, almost everyone else was there. So with respect to that, Tessa did a great job by getting it moved along, and the next meeting is next month sometime.
As I said on the library board as well, there was a discussion on the forward movement with the plans in Bayside. And it didn't seem like that was moving super fast.
That's, that's part of our discussion. That's the closed session item, is where negotiations are with.
Okay, but that was brought up during the library board meeting.
Okay. Anything else, Alderman Shaw? Okay. And then this month, there wasn't an ICC meeting to report on. MMSD doesn't meet. But I did want to just thank Alderman Doherty and Alderman Gallhard, as well as the city administrator. The committee that reviewed and interviewed candidates for city attorney did complete its work. We didn't get it done in time to have it on tonight's agenda, but it will be on our next agenda. So we have now spoken with the folks, and we are prepared to bring forward a recommendation at the next meeting. So, so I just wanted to, to thank the, the two aldermen and the, and the city administrator, because we spent an entire day interviewing candidates, and then talking about them and wrangling over a whole bunch of questions and issues afterwards. So, all right, but the process worked exactly the way the ordinance was written to have it work. All right, council will convene in closed session. Can I get a motion to convene in closed section, closed session, subject to statute nineteen point eight five sub one sub E, to discuss the status of negotiations over the North Shore Library Agreement?
Moved.
Moved by Alderman Schmeling, second of Alderman Doherty. All those in favor of convening in closed session, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are in closed session. Bye, Shante.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Vukovich, second of Alderman Gallhard to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we stand adjourned at seven forty-eight PM.